Good evening. Call to order, the Borough of Saro, Saroville Planning Board on August 20, 19, 2025. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
I have a roll call, please.
Mr. Candell, Ms. Larmen, Mr. Mueller, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Sataka, Mr. Velosin, Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Memorializations of resolutions?
We have one this evening, but we'll come back to that after the preliminary investigation study.
Okay. Need an acceptance of the last month's meeting minutes? Do I have a?
Make a motion.
Motion and a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Beth, communication agenda?
None this evening.
Site plan subdivision?
We have one this evening, application number PB24-01, Chickle LLC, Freddie Jimenez and Lucila Perez, 00 and 60 Cleveland Avenue, block 360, lots 191 through 194.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. You ready? Okay, great. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and your professionals. David Himmelman, I'm the attorney for the applicant, and Mr. Chairman, I have a brief opening remarks, and then we can proceed with our professional witnesses, if that's good with you.
That's perfect.
Great, okay. So as you know, the applicant has applied to the board for subdivision and bulk variance approval, and for the record, the property is identified as block 360, lots 191, 192, 193, and 194, of course, on the current tax map in Saroville, and for the, for the record, the properties are identified as 00 and 60 Cleveland Avenue. The parcels in question contain a total tract area of 10,000 square feet, and as you know, the applicant proposes to subdivide the property where lots 193 and 192 butt one another, and we want to construct a two-story family dwelling within the lots identified as 193 and 194. As you know, the property is entirely within the R5 single-family residence district zone. The proposed use of the proposed dwelling is permitted use in the zone. I wanted to give the board a little background as to sort of why we're here on this. In doing my research on this, there apparently was never a subdivision of the subject property lots, even though there were several conveyances that occurred. The recorded deeds reflect that the LLC was the grantee from the estate, and in 2003, the LLC conveyed title to 60 Cleveland Avenue to the Jimenezes, the co-applicant. That would be blocks 191 and 192. Unfortunately, when the transfer of title occurred from the lots, from the BD estate in 2021 and 2022 from the applicant, appears that they were improper conveyances as the lots were, have deemed merged at that point. So, under New Jersey law, they should have been, should not have been conveyed as though the properties were subdivided. So that's why we're really here. When the applicant took title to 00 Cleveland, which is lots 193 and 194, they essentially acquired a non-conforming lot, which you couldn't construct a dwelling without a variance. And quite frankly, this was identified by your zoning officer, Mr. Mashansky, and when the applicant had first come in, he, he and I spoke about this, and when the applicant first applied, he and I spoke about this, and he informed me that technically the lots had merged, and therefore, a subdivision was required. So, that's really why we're here. As you know, from the application materials, the proposed lot that we are looking to subdivide, that we're putting the proposed dwelling on, we need a variance for minimum lot area, which is the corner lot, where 6,000 feet is required and 5,000 square feet is proposed. We also have minimum lot width and front yard minimum variance, which are pre-existing, existing nonconformities, and, Mr. Chairman, we also identified another variance, which was not originally identified previously, and that's for the maximum building coverage, which we're going to have to also include as our relief, and we will have the architect go through that. So, I have two witnesses, Mr. Chairman, one is our architect, Steve Condon Sign, and then we have Colleen McGurk, who's our planner, and obviously, we will go through your board, your board planner and engineering memorandums as required, and address their comments.
Who do you want to start with?
So I think we'll start with our architect.
Okay.
Steve, come up. We will have to have him sworn in and qualified.
Yes. And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, you're sworn.
Steven Condon Sign, six, what? 63 Prospect Street, Bernardsville, New Jersey. I've been a licensed architect in New Jersey since 1989. I have a master's degree in urban planning from Pratt Institute, and I have testified as an expert witness before hundreds of municipal boards in the state of New Jersey.
You got a motion to accept his credentials? Second. All in favor? Yeah, I have it. Can continue, thank you very much.
All right, Steve, I just wanted to ask you a preliminary question. So tonight, I know you're going to testify on the proposed plan that you signed and sealed, and just for the record, I think that was last revised, was that April 10th?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, great. All right, so would you give the board an overview of the proposed project?
Yes.
And we'll work through the professional review memorandums as well. Thank you.
So the client would like to construct a single-family, two-and-a-half-story house on the lot. If it was an interior lot, there wouldn't be a variance, but because it's on the corner, there's an extra 10,000 square feet, which is required for a corner lot. So the client, we designed the house based off of the complying with all the setbacks, which would be 20 feet in the front yard, and because it's a corner lot, you have two front yards, so it's 20 and 20, and a side yard of eight, and then a rear yard of 25. Now, the client, we now discovered that our original assumption of the building coverage at 20% was based on the 6,000-square-foot lot. That's, it was an error on our part. It's actually the 5,000-square-foot lot, which would bring us to a maximum building coverage of 1,210 square feet, 1,000 square feet, and our building is 1,210 square feet. And I'll explain why the building is this size. So if you add up all the setbacks, the building width would be 22 feet wide, which is what we are. If you add up all the set, front-to-rear setbacks, the building would be 55 feet, which is what we are. So we are in compliance with all the setback, but that yields us a result of a building with a footprint of 1,210 square feet, so we would need a variance for that extra 210 square feet. And the reason why the client wanted to maximize the building footprint was because on the ground floor, we have a built-in garage, which takes up at least 20 feet. So on the first floor, the client has a built-in garage, a kitchen, a dining room, and a living room, and a half a bath. There's no other type of, there's not a bedroom there or anything, so these are all pretty much standard, and in today's living, these are all rooms that we normally would, would give into a house. On the second floor, we have a four bedrooms, two and a half baths, and I think it's a laundry room, so overall, the house is just a standard, single-family house, four bedrooms, two and a half baths, with a garage. The height of the building is conforming, it's only 28 feet. The style of the building, I would say, is sort of like a modern, contemporary, with a pitched roof in the back and a gable roof in the front. There's not a lot of conformity on the street to copy a style, because there's, there's just no conformity whatsoever, so this was a normal-style house that we would build in any neighborhood in New Jersey.
Okay. Steve, if I could just ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
And referring to, first, the memorandum from Morgan, a municipal engineer, who's the board engineer, of course, and they wanted us to address a couple of things in testimony. Let's just go through that.
Okay.
Okay. So turning to, I guess it's page three of six of the memorandum, Mr. Chairman, August 11th from Morgan. So with regards, I'm referring to de-engineering comments, with regard to prior approvals, you're not aware of any, correct?
No.
Okay, neither am I. Existing easements or proposed easements? I don't believe there are any, correct?
Not that I'm, I am aware of.
Okay, and the, any outside agency approvals that will be, that will be needed for this? I'm assuming there are?
I don't believe so.
Well, there are?
Except for soil erosion, sediment control.
And, and I'm assuming water and sewer department?
Right.
And fire?
Yeah.
And of course, the construction official? Okay.
Of course.
And we will, and also, we would need a soil removal?
Sure.
Permit?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. Turning further into, right. So there was an issue with regard to the, I'm referring now on, also on page three of six, architectural plan comments, there was an issue about the discrepancy on the height?
Right.
And I think we corrected that, and we submitted a revised schematic to that, correct?
Right, so the height of the building from the grade to the ridge is 28.67 feet.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Compliance with the height ordinance.
All right. And I know, I know the plans reflect there's a basement, just need you to confirm that there'll be no bedrooms will be placed?
No bedrooms in the basement.
Okay. Also, with regard to the proposed fireplace? Which protrudes from the western wall? Can you just describe that, and whether or not, because it's apparently, the engineer indicated that it's not depicted in plain view?
In plan view?
No, in, in plain view?
No, plan view.
A plan view, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I don't know what you mean by that, but it's clearly shown on the, on the floor plans that we have a bump out for. The, the flu is not so much a working fireplace, it's more a decorative item, so you're going to have a, an electric fireplace on the inside, which really doesn't require a flu, but as part of the style of the house, we decided to add this element to it. But it's not functional.
Okay. Turning now further into?
And it's only one foot deep.
It's only one foot deep?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, very good, okay. Turning now to page four of the Morgan memorandum. So there are several comments under subdivision plan comments. I don't believe that under, that's eight, A through H, A through G, I think we're in agreement to reflect all that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Turning to the grading and drainage comment?
Right.
And I know that the, you had a discussion with the board engineer about the issue of the drainage, and maybe you could briefly discuss that, and what, what our issue is there?
Well, the lot itself is relatively flat, except that on this, as it, as it, as it goes down towards, I think it's, what's the name of the street, the side street? It tends to go on a slope, otherwise, it's a pretty flat lot. The issue with the, the grading and the drainage was, there's a current condition at the corner, where water pools after heavy rain, and it, but it's not as a result of the lot itself, it's a result of the topography of the streets, and that since there's no stormwater management system, the water just pools there. So he wanted us to address that in the development of the property.
Right, and specifically?
So he, his opinion would be to, a way to address that pooling of water would be to install a catch basin in the street. The one problem, which I expressed to the engineer that I have with that, is that my client would be a private client working in a public street, number two, because it's, there is no stormwater system, and it's just basically a, a tank in the ground, it won't not be maintained, because who's going to maintain it? And if it's not maintained, it's going to get clogged with debris, and it's going to end up flooding anyway. So that was my concern, which I would ask the board to alleviate us of that, but that's up to you.
Okay, we can, Mr. Chairman, we can come back to that? I'm assuming, but, okay. Turning now to the other comments under, also on page five, under nine, I think you and I reviewed these with the, with the applicant, and other than the issue just described on the, on the drainage basin, I think for the most part, we are in agreement with that.
I think so, yeah, I think that we would provide all the additional sidewalk handicap ramp and upgrade, fix the curving as required.
Right.
I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay, very good. Okay. Steve, thank you, is there anything else you want to add, or you think we've covered it? Okay, great.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, we'll open it up to your board and your professionals.
Couple of quick questions. The comment that pertained to the fireplace, when I look at the site plan, it just doesn't show that one-foot bump out, it's chosen the floor plan, so I was just looking to have that added.
Yeah, sure.
And then, as it relates to the, the drainage issue, so what our recommendation is, is a sumped inlet, is an inlet that doesn't have a bottom, and it sits on stone. During really big rain events, the area is going to flood. I'm not asking the applicant to put in an inlet and tie it into nearby storm sewer, but it will help after a rain event, the flooding dissipate in a relatively quick manner. I certainly understand the concern about the maintenance, but what I will note is that 100 feet away down Garfield Place, so you can see it from this site, there is a bank of 10 stormwater inlets in Garfield Place. The reason being, for those in the, I'm not sure, but there's already municipal storm sewer that the borough is maintaining. I don't see any issue with an inlet in this location that the borough would maintain. Regarding working within the right-of-way, obviously, the applicant would have to get a road-opening permit, the same type of work that would be for the installation of sidewalk. The issue is, and if you look at, if you're familiar with the area, the reason the sidewalk has been failing is because water is ponding there. And if they upgrade the handicap ramp, you're still going to have water ponding there, and the concrete's going to fail again. So I think it is important to address an issue. Is it a, a perfect fit? It's not, but I think it's a reasonable fix that will help the area, and like I said, the water would drain in relatively quick fashion compared to what it does today, which is it, it bleeds through the broken-up concrete.
Mr.?
That was my recommendation for that.
Mr. Chairman, I understand where your engineer, your board engineer is coming. Our concern was doing work within the right-of-way in the public area, but obviously, we'd get a road-opening permit. Our concern was not so much the, the construction or install of this, you know, what you're recommending, I think the problem is, it's not, it wasn't connected, it's not connected to the storm sewer, so we were concerned that it's going to fill up, and then, since it's not connected to anything, it's, it may not act as a water retention, the way you're suggesting, but we're, we're open to that, I just, we were concerned about, from an engineering perspective, if this was going to be effective.
You, you wanted to install a tank, and this is an open-ended?
Correct, this has no bottom.
No bottom, so it's going to permeate?
No, I get that, and we'll, we can work with you, again, we're not opposed to the condition, we're just suggesting that we were concerned about the effectiveness and the, the design, but we can work with your board engineer on that.
I know you sort of glossed over section 8A through G.
Yeah.
When you were discussing my section D1 about existing and proposed easements, you said there were none, but I am asking for a site triangle easement in accordance with the borough standard, so that will be provided?
Yes.
Great. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead.
Just, yeah, real quickly, would you mind commenting on whether any fencing or landscaping's proposed on the corner lot? Just to kind of confirm for the record.
We're just going to seed and grass the lawn for the moment, and then, if the client wanted to do landscaping, I'm sure he would at some point, but there was, it's not, not intended at the moment.
Okay, that's fine, just asking, because corner lots sometimes, you know, for privacy and, and other reasons, just to make sure.
I mean, I would presume that a basic landscaping plan would, would want to be installed, because for obvious reasons, it's attractive, so, but we didn't put it on the plan, per se, but I think that's ultimately what the applicant will do.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, we want to bring up your?
We are going to bring up our, our planner, Colleen McGurk, who will testify on the justification for the, the variances. And we, Beth, I know we have, we've got the slide presentation, right? And I think the board members have that, right? Okay, great, all right. Good evening, Colleen.
Good evening. Good evening, board members.
So we'd have to have her sworn in and qualified, thank you.
Sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Great, you're sworn.
Okay. Would you just give a brief background of your CV and your professional qualification, so we can have you qualify as an expert in planning?
Certainly. I received my master's in urban planning from Boston University. I have worked as a professional planner for over 25 years. Most of my experience was at the municipal level, as serving as a township planner, but I started my business, Swick Stall and McGurk Planning Associates, in 2019. I've testified before multiple boards, including South Brunswick, Old Bridge, Edison, Metuchen, et cetera.
I have a motion to accept her credentials.
AICP, my license is current.
Second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. McGurk, if, I know that you have looked at the, the variances that we are seeking, particularly on the, the lot size, so if you would go through your planning justification and the research that you did, and obviously, in support of the relief, and then we can, of course, refer to the board and the professionals, any questions, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, I have reviewed the application, the site plan, the ordinance, the 2013 master plan, staff memos, and visited the site. So tonight, we're asking the board to approve a minor subdivision with bulk variances. The property in question, block 360, lots 191 through 194, contains 10,000 square feet, and is located at the intersection of Cleveland Avenue and Garfield Place at 00 and 60 Cleveland Avenue. The property is within the R5 zoning district, which requires a minimum of 5,000 square feet, so this is an oversized lot for the zone, with twice as much of the amount of required square footage. We are proposing to subdivide the property into two lots, with 5,000 square feet each, and 50 feet of the amount of required square, and 50 feet lot width, sorry. Lots 193 and 194 would contain the new single-family dwelling, but since this is a corner lot, a minimum of 6,000 square feet is required, and 60 feet of lot width, instead of the 5,000 and 50 lot width, that's for all interior lots. So we are requesting three bulk variances for the corner lot, lot area, lot width, and the max building coverage, 20% is allowed, whereas we are proposing 24%. And I guess also, we're adding in the electric fireplace, 20 feet of front yard setbacks required, whereas we are proposing 19. So we meet the lot depth of 100 feet, and we meet all of the setbacks required, front, side, rear, except for the front setback on Garfield Place, and the building height. We're also proposing 38.90% for the total impervious coverage, which is well below the max permitted of 45%. There is also an existing variance condition on lots 191 and 192, due to the existing single-family dwelling location, which will remain on the property. The existing front yard setback is 12.68, which does not meet the current ordinance requirement of 20 feet. The dwelling was built in 1927, so prior to zoning standards. The proposed two-story dwelling would consist of four bedrooms. We are providing two off-street parking spaces, one space in the driveway, and one in the garage. The surrounding uses consist of single-family dwellings, and the appearance of the proposed dwelling will fit in with the neighborhood. If we could take a look at the exhibit? The first slide is just a photo of 60 Cleveland Avenue, and it also shows the vacant area on the corner, 00 Cleveland. Next one. That's the corner, it shows the intersection of the property. Next slide. And that's looking southward towards Washington, just showing down the street and the different types of houses that are located on that street. That again is the intersection of Garfield and Cleveland, so you get an idea of what the property looks like. Next slide. And this is the tax map. So the tax map shows a historic development pattern, was, which was created from the formation of 25-foot-wide lots, and the various combinations that occurred from this, mainly 5,000 square feet. If we look at the surrounding area, out of the six corner lots, four are 5,000 square feet, our lot is 10,000, and the adjacent lot is also 10,000. And if we look at block 360, the entire block, 71% of the lots are 5,000 square feet, only 29% are larger than 5,000 square feet. None of the corner lots are 6,000 square feet. Again, this is due to the original lot pattern of 25-foot-wide lots, which would have created mainly 5,000, 7,500, or 10,000 square feet. The Borough's 2013 Master Plan states, quote, "Primary uses facing the single-family residential districts include preserving the integrity of the existing family neighborhoods," unquote. This proposed development will accomplish this goal by constructing a permitted use at a scale that is in keeping with the neighborhood, which is preferable to a much larger dwelling on the existing 10,000-square-foot lot. With regards to special reasons, the project meets several goals of the MLUL, including Goal A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. The proposed development will be attractive with a modern design, it is a permitted use, and the proposed lot sizes would fit in with the neighborhood, and would be a good use of the property, which is an oversized lot for the R5 zone. The setbacks are being met, and the site triangle, as shown on the site plan, will be clear of any obstructions, and there will be more than adequate visibility. Goal E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and preservation of the environment. The proposed single-family dwelling would be built at the appropriate density. Goal G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agriculture, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses in open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. The property is oversized for the zone, and the proposed dwelling would be, would provide a benefit to the community by creating new housing stock for the residents of Saroville that would fit in with the existing neighborhood, and the proposed dwelling is fully conforming with all aspects of the ordinance requirements. The proposed development also meets the C2 hardship balancing analysis. Do the benefits of the proposed use outweigh any detriments associated with the requested bulk variances for undersized lot and width? And building coverage? Yes, the lot area and width and building coverage are similar to the surrounding lots. This development is more in keeping with the surrounding lot sizes, and will fit in with the character of the neighborhood. The proposed first floor would consist of 1,210 feet, 10 square feet, which is consistent with the type of single-family dwellings that are built in today's market. Creating new housing stock would be a benefit to the community. The development, the dwelling, and proposed layout would create a desirable visual environment, and would be consistent with land use patterns. As far as the front yard setback, the proposed electric fireplace does create the additional variance, but it measures one foot by six feet, so this would be de minimis, and I don't see any negative impacts that this would create. And it is my professional opinion that this application can be granted without substantial detriment, and the benefits of the proposed use substantially outweigh any potential negative impacts to the zone. The adjacent properties are not being impacted, since the majority of the required setbacks are being met. This proposal is appropriate, given that it is a better zoning alternative than the current underutilized property, and the additional housing will benefit the community. There is no substantial detriment to the public good, and the variances can be reconciled with, and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, because the development is consistent with recommendations in the state development, redevelopment plan for metropolitan planning areas, one, which is this is located in, and the MLUL would be advanced by the proposed deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements. That is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McGurk, for that well-thought-out and reasoned planning justification. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions of Ms. McGurk, but you guys might.
Any questions to the planner?
I have one question.
I have one question. Did you do an analysis similar to the lot size for building coverage on undersized lots?
Well, I found out tonight that we had a building coverage variance, but I did look, I have a list of all the square footage of the homes in the block, the max, though. So there were quite a few that were 1,700 square feet. But that's the total square footage.
Anybody else? Joe?
I'm good. I was wondering the same thing, actually. And no, I'm good. I think they touched on all the variances and all the proofs. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, yep. So just to conclude, we obviously would request that the board act favorably upon the subdivision and obviously incorporating the bulk variances. And we think we've provided the sufficient justification from a planning standpoint. I anticipate that we've addressed your professional, your planner and engineer's comments, and we hope that the board would act favorably upon the application, and thank you.
At this point, I'll need a motion to open up to the public. Second, all in favor? The ayes have it. Anybody from the public like to speak? Come on up. State your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Heakin. I live at 50 Driftwood Drive in Portland. And you'll forgive me my ignorance. I understand that there's some work that's about to begin, or there's been some talk about the mini mall, that it's sinking.
That's different. That's a different.
I think you're here on the, are you here on the investigation study?
No, I'm woefully behind the curve, and I'm wondering.
This is only to speak of the two houses that they want to put.
Oh, okay. This is, all right. I just have some questions about what's going on.
Well, we'll get to that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
Does anybody have any questions on this matter? Anybody want to speak on this matter? Anybody from the public like to speak on this matter? If not, I'll take a motion to close the public. All in favor? The ayes have it. We're back in session. Gentlemen, ladies, what's your pleasure? And bulk variances?
All like the, I guess, the engineer comments.
Right, everything.
Everybody, they asked to be incorporated, that they said they would agree to.
Anybody else have any questions on them? All in favor?
The roll call? Mr. Kandell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Sitaka?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Application approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members and your board professionals. Thank you very much, and always a pleasure seeing you.
Better than being viewed.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next on our agenda is the preliminary investigation study for the area in need of redevelopment and/or rehabilitation, Mini Mall Drive, intersection of Ernston Road. The report is dated August 20, 2025, prepared by Vina Sawad from VMS Planning LLC. Vina?
Just before we start on this, I know there's some questions about eminent domain, and the proposed area in need of redevelopment would prohibit the use of eminent domain, would actually prohibit it as compared to allowing it.
Hi.
Do you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. I'll just wait for Beth to load it. Ready? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. I've been in front of you before, so I hope you accept my credentials, and I can just directly proceed with the presentation. Under the statutory powers instituted by the State of New Jersey and the Sayerville Borough Council Resolution dated 2024-289, adopted on November 25, 2024, the Borough Council authorized the planning board to undertake this area investigation study. It comprises of 17 parcels, and these parcels are located on either side of Ernston Road. And before I even start, for those who are watching, I just want to let the residents know, as well as business owners, that should the planning board approve this study and the council designates the area as an area in need of redevelopment and rehabilitation, this, the subsequent redevelopment plan that would be written would be a non-condemnation plan, which means that the borough will not exercise its power of eminent domain. And what that simply means for businesses is they can still continue with the uses they have. It does not change, or it does not force existing business out of that area. All it does, it gives the owners an opportunity to redevelop their sites under the statutory requirements of the redevelopment law. So any business that is in there can continue to do so. If they wish to redevelop their site, they would have that opportunity to move ahead and redevelop. And while I've spent hours on this site, some of the challenges of this site, as I see, I'm sorry, as a planner, is this area, entire area, it's at the municipal boundary between Old Bridge and Sayerville. So if you look at it, if you're moving, if you're traversing northbound on Route 9, it is a gateway entrance on one side. If you're exiting and you're moving southwards, then you're leaving Sayerville, but it's an important area. What I also notice is the area is zoned for highway commercial, B3 zone. However, majority of these parcels within the study area actually don't abut Route 9. They do not have direct access. The only parcel that has access is the White Castle parcel, and that is why, to some extent, it's disadvantaged. The underutilization, the vacancy, or the vacant lots that you see are mostly because they don't have direct access on a public street. And most of them, most of the parcels are landlocked. Some of them probably have shared access easements, but not all of them, and that puts a lot of constraints on the site circulation. And the extensive report that was circulated to the board members actually evaluates each of those 17 parcels and explains the challenges. It has a photo survey. It has an aerial to describe each parcel and what criterias it can meet. So at this presentation, you already have a comprehensive report that was provided. I'll just go, I'll just give you an overview of the area and some of the highlights. So what you see on the screen is the, is study area map. It shows the 17 parcels. The entire study area comprises of roughly 12 acres of land. And I said before, the area is located on either sides of Ernston Road. It is next to the municipal boundary. And what is, what is interesting about this area is, I'm sure you, most of you have heard, but Old Bridge Township, the neighboring municipality, is seeking a transit village designation from NJDOT for the area on the other side of the municipal boundary. What you have in front of you is a study area map. The one in orange shows the transit village that Old Bridge is pursuing. Their council has also directed the planner to undertake an area investigation study. This study area within Sayerville directly abuts the transit village. And when you apply for a transit village designation is typically between half a mile radius or 10 minutes of walking distance from the commuter bus terminus. In this case, because the study area that we're talking about today is right next to that half a mile radius, the area is actually at walking distance 12 minutes to 13 minutes to the Old Bridge Bus Commuter Parking Lot. And that bus service has one of the highest riderships in the state of New Jersey, and that connects you directly. That's the last stop that connects you to New York City. So there is a lot of advantage that even Sayerville could take by redevelopment of this site, and that is why this area is being reviewed for its development potential. So next slide. Out of the 17 parcels, 13 of them are developed. There are four parcels that are vacant. The parcels that are developed contain the mini mall, which is quite a prominent building, and people know about it. There have been issues with that site as well. There are restaurants. There are food stores. There are some utilities, like the cell tower, the water tower. There are utility lots there. And then again, there are four vacant parcels. Each of these parcels has no direct access, actually. Very few, like maybe one or two have even direct access on Ernston Road. They are interconnected, and some of them are actually, by definition, landlocked. They have driveways around it, but they don't have direct access on a public street. Next slide. So some of the objectives I've already talked about, we are trying to take advantage of the area being ripe for development, it being right next to a potential transit village designation on the other side of the municipal boundary. The area is challenged because it does not have direct access to Route 9, although it is, although it is zoned for highway commercial. So redeveloping the site, creating a redevelopment plan would allow it more flexibility and also would allow it to have other retail commercial uses as well as residential uses that opens up the, for a sound planning, because some of these lots could be merged, and you could create a comprehensive plan for the area. So it will, again, enhance economic growth and create new employment opportunities as it will open up to new retail commercial uses within this area. Next slide. On the screen, you have the eight criterias that are defined by the local redevelopment law, as well as Section 3, which allows you to include any parcel that does not meet one of the eight criterias of redevelopment law. So if your land is vacant for more than 10 years, you could include it in Criteria C. You have Criteria A, which is about substandard buildings. There is Criteria B, and so on and so forth. But there are eight criterias that are defined in redevelopment law and have been enumerated in detail in the report, as well as it's on the screen. This area is also being evaluated for rehabilitation criteria, which means that if there is, if the building is older, and you know, you could assign a criteria or needs some sort of rehabilitation, you could include that property within the, and based on the redevelopment law, you have underutilization, you have tax delinquencies, based on which you could include a property for rehabilitation. And what that means, when I say redevelopment, when I say rehabilitation, what that means is, under the redevelopment law, it allows a municipality to come up with a pilot, should the council want to exercise that power. And that allows the council to give, when it's a redevelopment site, it allows the council to give up to 30 years of tax abatements. When it comes to rehab, it allows the council to give five years of rehab, five years of tax abatement, so that the property owner has the advantage of fixing the property, improving it, or revitalizing it. Next slide. This is rehabilitation, which I already spoke about. Next slide. So within the study area, there are five lots that meet Criteria C, which talks about vacancy. These parcels have been vacant for more than 10 years. There are 13 parcels that meet Criteria D, and Criteria D is critical, especially for this area, because majority of the parcels are landlocked. I had gone through the engineering, the tax department, the building department, and according to the engineer's report, most of the parking lots within these areas need to be, can you please, sorry, need to be fixed. The Ernston Road was recently paved, but the Mini Mall Drive, which is a private road, as well as Westminster Boulevard, is in bad shape. There are cracks in the pavements. The sidewalks are cracked. It really needs some care. So paving and milling of those roadways are recommended. There are sites with huge parking lots, which are not properly maintained. And when I was walking through the sites, the site circulation is actually so challenged because the driveways, there's no direct access on a public street. So these driveways are the ones that provide access to the interior lots. And many of the places, it causes vehicular and pedestrian conflicts while maneuvering in and out of the site. Many of these parcels have issues with visibility, because a business would flourish only if it is visible when you are on the main highways, but these buildings are set back. So you wouldn't, unless you are on the site, you wouldn't even know that they exist. There are properties that have food truck on it, because the parking lot is empty. The owner is using it for an added business, which probably is a violation. The mini mall site, in the past few years, had almost 21 code violations. As of now, there are three open violations. There are few vacant stores. The parking lot, I tried to look at the aerial imagery throughout the last five years, and the parking lots are pretty empty, which is a clear indication of underutilization. And there are some stores and offices that are empty. Section H applies to smart growth, and the entire area is within the Metropolitan Planning Area, PA1. It encourages sustainable smart development within those metropolitan areas. It also encourages infill redevelopment within those areas. So Criteria H can be applied to all 17 parcels, as well as Section 3, where all 17 parcels applies. And Section 3 is related to inclusion of a parcel if it does not meet any of the criteria. However, that parcel is critical to the development of the entire site, then you could include that parcel. And in this case, because majority of the parcels don't have frontage, it is quite essential to include those parcels for Section 3. Area in need of rehabilitation, there are nine parcels that qualify for Criteria 3. There is some sort of underutilization and vacancy on those nine parcels. There is one lot which has tax delinquency, and that's why it meets Criteria 4 for rehabilitation. But I've provided you with an extensive report. There is a photo survey. Some of the pictures have been posted on the PowerPoint slide. You can see the cracked paving. You can see the empty parking lots. You can see some vacant stores within the mini mall building, with the water tower, with the utility buildings. There is no landscaping. There's fencing, but literally the area has 100% impervious coverage with the driveways all surrounding it. So the photos, the next two slides are just basically photo surveys showing vacant stores. There's an entire vacant building, and again, that is barely visible from the public right-of-way. It has access through a driveway, so you wouldn't even know that it existed. This is the other side. The central photo is of a restaurant, which is on the other side of Ernston Road. But even that area with a strip mall is, has issues, and it becomes a hangout place, because it creates an empty parking lot, showing again in underutilization. There has been police activity noted on these sites. So redeveloping, revitalizing this area seems to be. So redeveloping, revitalizing this area seems to be critical. I think with the area on the other side of the municipal boundary, again, being considered for redevelopment, I believe that this is a great opportunity for Sarville to even reconsider the zoning through creation of a redevelopment plan. I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Saying no questions, we'll open to the public. I need a motion. Second, all in favor?
I'm a tenant of Mini Mall, and as you're saying...
Hang on, you have to pronounce your name and follow the order.
And speak into the microphone.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm a tenant of Mini Mall for the last thirty-five years, and as you were saying, that a parking lot is cracked, is not used, is not accessed to public, this is a landlord's responsibility to fix it. But if he don't maintain, it doesn't mean that as a tenant, we get kicked out. So I don't know, there is no other land in Sarville that it can utilize for affordable housing, or you can force them to do anything about it, you know. The landlord should enforce to fix the parking lot, if that's the big issue.
Go ahead.
So, as I said in my presentation, we're not trying to kick any tenant out of the building. Vena? If... So, nobody's trying to kick out any tenant from the building. This area designation, actually, need and redevelopment designation, only allows the owner to take advantage and redevelop the site, improve it. If he doesn't want to do anything with the site, nobody's going to force him. It is just an incentive for him to improve the site. It is not forcing any tenants out. And the cracked, if, if he chooses not to do anything, then it becomes, at some point, a code enforcement issue, if maintenance. And I think Mini Mall, like I said, there have been, in the past five years, like twenty-one violations that the building department has issued. So the building department is doing their job and enforcing anything that they could in terms of the building code. But in terms of maintenance, it is the tenants who have to talk to the owner. But if your fear is that by saying that the site is in need of redevelopment, you're going to be displeased, that's not true. Nobody, like I said in the beginning, this is a non-condemnation plan, the borough will not enforce eminent domain, so nobody's going to be removed from the location.
No, but as far as I understand, the redevelopment and rehab is in means, they're going to knock the building out, and they're going to, with the houses or something?
No, that's not true.
So what is they gonna do?
So it only, they don't have to do anything. That's what I'm saying. The owner doesn't have to. So what happens is, once the study gets approved by the planning board, they make a recommendation to the council. The council passes a resolution deciding that this area is in need of redevelopment. After that, they choose to create a redevelopment plan, which is a new zone plan. But a new zone plan doesn't mean that the underlying zoning goes away. It only opens up other uses to that area. And this is a commercial zone, it is in the commercial. The council may choose, if they write a redevelopment, if they authorize someone to write a redevelopment plan. It could be a mixed-use development with some apartments, but apartments doesn't necessarily mean it's affordable. I heard affordable housing. It's not a site that is catered to just affordable housing. We're talking about just redeveloping the site. We haven't talked about residential, we have not reached a stage where we are talking about the uses. At some point, when a plan is developed, I'm sure the owners will have a say, and they will attend the council meeting, they will be notified as well. So nobody's displacing anybody here.
I know, but how can somebody let it go so far that you say that he needs redevelopment? If the parking lot is in such a bad condition, there is no access, the Mini Mall Drive is a private, so these are all the things that you were saying, so, so far, nobody...
Alex, maybe you can chime in if I'm, if I'm failing to explain.
Why nobody enforce the landlord? Take care of the property that he owns.
Question is...
Like if I don't cut my grasses, let it grow, neighbor complain, and somebody give me psychosis, so why can't somebody did that?
There's nothing...
When it run down so much that everybody see as redevelopment area.
That happens.
It happens, but you know, as a tenant...
Well, as a tenant, you have a right to speak to the landlord and say, hey, look at him, paying your rent, everybody's paying your rent, why don't you maintain your property so I can afford to pay you the rent?
Yeah, but then, then he won't renew the lease. That he's a paying bar, and you're not getting the lease again.
I mean, from what I hear, it's an issue between the tenants and the landlord. The borough actually doesn't have say in it. If there were issues related to actual physical building, and something the building code could do, or code violation could do, then there was, I could see a way that the borough intervenes. But this purely is an issue between the tenant and landlord, which should be sorted between us.
Okay, so what is the plan, though? What do you...
There is no plan yet.
So they, nobody has to get out?
All we're asking for tonight is that they do a study. When they do the study, they come back here, we decide if the study is worthy to go to the, go to the council, okay? So if we recommend that the study is A, B, C, and D of what she explained, we'll, we'll tell the council, we think it's a good idea or a bad idea. Well, the council can either vote yes with us, or no against us, or they, if we say no, they could still say yes, they have the final say. So this is just the beginning of a preliminary study. Nothing's getting built, nothing's getting knocked down, we're going to see if we can come up with a better plan. Now, if the owners say, boy, this fits my, you know, he can get involved in it. If he doesn't, he doesn't have to. So that's where we stand tonight. All we're doing is looking to make sure that everybody has a say at this, and that along the process, you're, you're kept in the loop, okay?
Thank you. But you know, the 449, across the street from the Mini Mall, they, CME, I read the email, that they're gonna build sixty units of affordable housing. So this might be the same way. That they're gonna knock down the pavements and the affordable housing, because it's all close to the Route 9 and all that.
So the purpose of this is not to say what to do with it. Purpose of this meeting is to say, does this meet certain criteria? And in fact, this board really has no idea what the council wants to do with it.
Yeah, because that's my livelihood.
No, I understand.
We understand that. We want you to understand that...
Last time, it's your six months to get out.
Well, these things don't take six months. You know, we're gonna be here for a while on this one. There's, there's certain procedures that has to get done before they even come back to us, then we have to sit down and decipher it, and then we have to send it to the council, and then they can decide what they want to do with it, okay?
And you will not be displeased, just because of this area designation, no.
I just wanted to make sure.
No.
Anybody else have any questions? Come on up, ma'am.
Hi, Maggie can, 50 Driftwood Drive. There's no doubt that that parking lot needs help. I had my first auto accident exiting the Mini Mall. So as far as that goes, we're all for that. We're all for not having vacant...
We're not promising that.
Well...
We're trying.
Well, we're all trying, and I understand. Our concern was the stores, the vacancies, that blight, if something could be done about that...
That's what, that's what this is intended to do, to take a good look at this and, and to see if we can do away with that.
And as far as affordable housing...
Come up with a better plan to make it more economical, feasible, and tax-ratable for us.
Actually, you may or may not be aware of this, but there's a very large dumpster that's in the parking lot. You've seen that, full of grease, it's a mess. People dump all kinds of stuff over there. It's as if, we're directly behind the Mini Mall. It's as if people don't even realize that people live there. This isn't, this attracts rats, mice, whatever. So if something could be done about that, or somebody could start thinking...
That's a code enforcement, we could have that look back.
Somebody could start thinking about that, and the drive, I've almost fallen several times in the cracked. We, we use the Mini Mall all the time, because we, in fact, this gentleman, the liquor store, we use all this, all the time, Santino's. So if something could be done about improving that, we're, I mean, we're all for it. If it means affordable housing at some point, or it means housing, so be it, as long as it's not encroaching on the property owners, you know, that are there. You know, we care about...
You start talking about affordable housing up near the water tower, you're going to see more than one people here.
Yeah, no, all...
Ma'am, for the record, I didn't catch your address, what was the address?
50 Driftwood Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Welcome. Anybody else have any questions on this redevelopment study? Anybody else have any questions on this redevelopment study? Would you like to sum up?
I just would request the board to vote favorably and make a recommendation to the council to designate this area as an area in need of redevelopment and rehabilitation. Thank you so much.
Aye.
So chairman, we have a resolution already written recommending to the Borough Council that the property known Block 446, lots 2.01 and 2.02, Block 445, lots 1.01, 1.02, 1.03, 2.03, 2.04, 3.01, 4.03, 4.04, 4.05, 4.06, 5.03, and 5.04, as well as Block 449.07, lots 1.01, 2.01, and 3.01 should be designated as an area of need of redevelopment. Can we have a motion?
Second. All in favor?
We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Candell, Ms. Larmen, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Tataka, Mr. Williams, Chairman Tai. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, old business, new business, and administrative matters. Our next meeting is September 3rd. We currently have two informal applications that possibly might be coming forward for there. Want to open up to the public?
Make a motion, open to the public.
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Anybody from the public would like to speak on any matter?
Anybody from the public like to speak? Hearing none, I make motion that we close public portion.
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor? Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.